Good evening. I'd like to call the December 2nd, 2019 meeting of the University Heights City Council to order. Mrs. Thomas, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Here.
Mr. Weisman?
Here.
Mr. Sims?
Here.
Mrs. Cardy?
Here.
Mr. Erdel?
Here.
Mrs. Cameron?
Here.
Mrs. Wise?
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse Mrs. Cameron?
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Cardy?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Very good. Mrs. Cameron is excused. Roll. All those who are able, please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have set a minutes from November 18th, 2019. Is there a motion?
Set with minutes.
Yeah, we have a motion for approval of the minutes by Mr. Sims and a second by Mrs. Cardy. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Cardy?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Yes.
Very good. The minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is comments from the audience. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Total time allowed, fifteen minutes per meeting unless otherwise permitted by council ordinance number 91-25. If there's anybody here who would like to address the city, please come up to the podium, speak into the microphone, state your name and address for the record, or else you may be recorded. Thank you. Mr. Walker, you perform.
Thank you. Name is Scott Walker, 2224 Edgerton Road. About two months ago, I addressed council about the Move to Amend Initiative, which is basically Citizens United. And it was agreed, I believe, at that time that grass passing as an ordinance would be a little bit too much of an undertaking, and we asked to have it passed as a resolution. I just want to, I'm just here to make sure that this doesn't drop through the cracks. And I'd like to see council at least sometime in the next, well, you can set the agendas to when, but sometime in the not-too-distant future if possible, to have this passed as a resolution. As you know, it's basically, this is passed as an ordinance in Shaker Heights, Cleveland Heights, and in South Yewood, where they do have Democracy Days. With a resolution, we will not have a Democracy Day. Basically, as a reminder, Citizens United is basically helping maintain our democracy, where we do not, we want to submit that corporations are not people and speech is not money. So that's kind of what it boils down to, and I'll be glad to entertain questions at any time. And most of you have my email, for better or worse. So again, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Walker. Is there anyone else who care to address the city this evening? Ms. Paul?
Hello. My name is Joan Spurrel, and my address is 3121 Berkshire Road in Cleveland Heights. But I am a resident of the school district, and I am also, I work for the Literacy Cooperative of Greater Cleveland. I'm the director of the Imagination Library Program. Some of you may have heard of it. This is a program that Dolly Parton founded over 20 years ago, and through this program, with her local funding partners, has given away, has mailed to children's homes 127 million books, high-quality, age-appropriate books. In 2014, thanks to the Heights Family Foundation, this program became available to every child in University Heights under the age of five. It mails a free, high-quality, age-appropriate book to children every month from birth until the fifth birthday. In University Heights right now, you have a few, about a little over 300, between 300 and 400 children enrolled. That is a small fraction of all of the children who are age-eligible in University Heights. It's made available simply by where children live, if there's a local funding partner making it available to them. Forty-one studies have shown that this program has a positive and significant impact on family literacy habits, kindergarten readiness, third-grade reading on grade level. A recent study even showed that children who participated in this program had better school attendance rates and fewer school suspensions. The most, the single most important factor for a child's early school success is an introduction to books and being read to at home prior to starting school. It's a wonderful program. I taught kindergarten for 10 years in the Chicago area. I taught Head Start and State Pre-Kindergarten in the Chicago Public Schools. I can vouch for the quality of these books and the quality of this program. Since it's an international program, the data protection policies that we use are the European policies, which are better, that are even better than the American. So we are very, very protective of children's information. We never share our list with anyone else. They will never be asked to pay for the program. It's completely free, no strings attached. It is a gift from Dolly Parton and from her local funding partners. I would appreciate your help in spreading the word among families in University Heights. I've sent an email to Mike Cook and Mayor Brennan with sample blurb that could be put on your website, in your various communications. I'm going to share a little packet of info, my card, and some sample enrollment forms. Families can enroll online, but all of you, I'm sure, have many relationships in the community, and you can share it via social media, et cetera. There's so many benefits and strengths to this program, one of which also is that we have the contact info for all of these families, so we can connect them to resources and events that are happening. We can target emails by age group, by community, so that when it's time for kindergarten registration, or there's a March into pre-K, or March into kindergarten event in the district, or family literacy nights, et cetera, if the district asks us to share that information in a timely manner, we can send out emails to the families who are enrolled and make connections and provide just additional support. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but in the meantime, I just ask you that you share this. You can get PDFs of the enrollment form and take them around when you're out and about in the community, you know, when you're walking down the street, you know? And spread the word, please, because it's a win-win. The more children you have enrolled, the younger they are when they're enrolled, the more they benefit, the more we all benefit. This program has proven to be successful in fostering a love of reading and learning in children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paul. Are any questions for Ms. Paul?
Do you have any questions?
If you please make sure they get a set of materials to Mr. Cook.
I'll give this to Mr. Cook. Would you each like?
Yes.
I'll just send these to him. Don't need some extras, but just spread them around.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody, oh, Mr. Sims, did you have something?
Yeah, this is just a small observation. The zip code 44118 is not listed.
Because it's, the University Heights community is listed. That's for the city of Cleveland.
Oh, okay. So I see by, okay, those are codes in Cleveland, and then the entirety of the communities that are listed.
Exactly. Exactly. Yes, and I guess I could have mentioned also that this program will be expanding, hopefully soon, to the entire county. This is the main project of the First Lady of Ohio, actually, and the state funding was, there was $5 million allocated from the state to help expand this program around the whole state, and they're making it a priority to expand its reach in the county. And if you'll notice on some of the documents, there's different communities reflected that are on the enrollment form, because we actually expanded to South Yewood, Linthurst, as well as others, because of that state funding. But it's, they know the power of this program, too, so, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
No, thank you. Okay, are there, is there anybody else who care to address the city this evening? Okay, very good. And we will close comments from the audience for tonight and move on to reports and communications from the mayor taking of action. Socket Tumi, "The University Heights Sock Drive is underway. Now through December 20th, we will be accepting donations of new socks for distribution to the homeless and the needy. You may drop your socks at City Hall during regular business hours, at the police and fire department after hours, and at the University Heights Library during their regular hours. With wintry weather upon us, the creature comfort of having warm, dry feet should be self-evident, so please donate all the new socks you can spare." Walter Stinson hosts Senior Happenings Thursdays at 2:00 p.m. at the University Heights Library. I'm happy to report that on January 2nd, 2020, I will be the featured speaker at Senior Happenings to address the seniors and anyone else who attends. It is free and open to the public, and yes, after brief opening remarks, I take Q and A, just as I have the last two times, so have at me. The 2020 State of the City Address will be February 11th, 2020, and that's Tuesday at 7:00 p.m. at the Jardine Room at John Carroll University. I encourage you all to attend. As Mike Cook will elaborate his report, the December edition of the newsletter will be out next week. In addition to the sock drive, the newsletter will feature a story on Ready Notify, the Kala County's emergency contact system. Previously, the city of University Heights used Code Red and paid a premium for that service. Code Red has since won the contract as the vendor for the Ready Notify service with the county, and we are now encouraging our residents to sign up anew. Even if you signed up for Code Red notifications before, there are now more options than ever to be used for the levels of notification, i.e. emergency and non-emergency announcements, and the methods of notification, i.e. email, mobile phone, landline phone, text, and so on. There is also an app to download, so you can sign up now at universityheights.com/readynotify, all one word, no space in between or underscore in between. Last Thursday was Thanksgiving. We all found our ways to mark the day and give thanks, hopefully with the company of loved ones and good cheer. The city, with the help of 1-88-OHIO-COM and Be All These Bagels, gave away over 100 turkeys this Friday before Thanksgiving. Thank you to Mike Pollak and 1-88-OHIO-COM for providing the turkeys. Thank you to Rachel and Sarah Gross and everyone at Be All These Bagels for providing the freezer space to hold the turkeys locally before the giveaway. And thank you to Mike Cook, to Kelly Thomas, to Denise Ball for joining me outside to give away the turkeys. And thank you to Councilman Phil Erdel for helping us make one special delivery.
Thank you. You're welcome.
We will have cake before our next meeting to celebrate council members Stephen Sims and Pamela Cameron be here at 6:30 p.m. before our next meeting to join us for cake and a recognition ceremony thanking Councilman Sims and Councilwoman Cameron for their service. I attended and chaired the meeting of the Heights Hillcrest Communications Center Board. Our regional dispatch entity was on budget for 2019. We approved its budget for 2020. Thus far, it has proven to be a success story for regional collaboration. Thank you to our director, Nick DeCicco, and to fellow board members, Shaker Heights Mayor David Weiss, Richmond Heights Mayor David Roach, Cleveland Heights City Manager Tanisha Riley, South Yewood Police Chief Kevin Neder for everything you do, together with our police and fire chiefs of all five cities, working together for the safety of our communities. This year, we have managed to stay on top of leafpocalypse 2019. For a little while there, it looked like we were going to have a repeat of 2018, but overall, we've had all hands on deck by our dedicated service employees, up to four times a week on leaf crews since late October, a measured amount of overtime, more cooperative weather, temporary no parking signs that have been somewhat honored, the campaign to let residents know of the options of mulching their leaves or bagging their leaves, because leaves leave faster when you bag them. And the strong work of Service Director Jeff Picorni, Assistance Service Director John Pacella, both leading the way. We are on our ninth pass around the city. I've taken up all Jeff's good news from his report. Final pass should begin a week from today, November 9th, and finish on Saturday, December, I said November, but December 9th, and finish on Saturday, December 14th. If you still want to rake your leaves to the tree lawn, please do it now and no later than this weekend. After that, you can bag them, you can mulch them, or you can wait till spring cleanup, because the trucks will be refitted for snow removal. So while we are giving thanks, thank you, Mr. Picorni, thank you, Mr. Pacella, thank you to the dedicated full-time and part-time employees of the service department. And finally, while we are not at City Hall, as I deliver this, please make a point of riding by after dark and taking a look at the holiday lights we put out this year. I'd like to thank our intern, Ibrahim Bizan, of University Heights Scarfing, for doing the preliminary design, working with Jeff and John, and then Scott Riddick and other members of our service department to get the lights up in the trees on Thanksgiving week. And yes, they are LEDs, so they are as efficient as well as tested, and they turn on every night at 4:20. Thank you. This concludes my report. First item on the agenda is Item A, Ordinance 2019-67, authorizing temporary appropriations for current and other expenditures of the city of University Heights, Ohio, for the period commencing January 1, 2020 and ending December 31, 2020. This is on first reading. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mayor. This is just temporary appropriations to be filed with Budget Commission of the County by the first week in January to give us spending authority to start the year. I am in the process of doing an entire review of the budget, so I would not take these figures as being anywhere close to what would be permanently approved. It's just to get it on file, and it's for the complications we have with the accounting system. I did my best to mirror what I thought would be an approximation of what we could come up with based on the revenue. But there will be substantial changes, particularly to the capital budget, but this is simply a statutory requirement to file to have spending authority at the beginning of the year.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Are there any questions for Mr. Kennedy?
Mayor, I don't have a question for Mr. Kennedy, and thank you, because when I was able to access the information from the city, I read through all the numbers and took a look. I was going to ask, could the clerk send one of the agendas down? I didn't bring one with me, and I find I can't access, so I'd like to be able to follow up on this progress. And thank you, Mr. Kennedy, for the work so far. I might just go ahead and say, thank you, that because we had a change in finance director, we did decide this year to go forward with temporary appropriations rather than trying to run through our original scheduled budget process so that we would be able to approve the budget before the end of the calendar year. This is something that is very common. University Heights used to do this regularly, so it is a good practice. It gives us time, so, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Cardy. Any other questions or comments with regard to the agenda in main? Oh, yes, Mr. Weisman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the past, the temporary appropriations that we file has a sunset date of March 31st, rather than this. This has a date of January 1 to December 31.
Yes, yes. Well, this March 31st is the deadline by which we have to pass a budget. That's a state deadline. That's a firm deadline. The appropriation period would remain all of 2020, which is why it says that, but you're right. We have to pass the budget by March 31st. We're required under state law.
So is it practically any different to do it with, I mean, this looks like with the total appropriations of $20 million, that's, is that the entire year? Is that?
It's the entire year.
Right, right. So it just, I mean, how does that, how does that square up with the fact that we're not passing the budget for the entire year? We're just doing it for...
Well, correct. We're not passing the budget for the entire year, but we're passing temporary appropriations for the year of 2020. I think that's how we should be taking that.
That's, that's correct.
So what's, I'm just curious as to why the old one was always dated. We just, we basically passed it for three months rather than 12 months.
There are lots of things we did the old way that weren't right, or could be done better. I, I don't know why we did things differently before, except to say that I have confidence in the way we're doing things now under Mr. Kennedy.
But that is accurate. I do recall that also. We only passed temporary appropriations for the first quarter, but...
I think it's, I think it's that we have to have the actual budget finalized by the end of March.
We do.
That is correct.
That's why, that's why. I just want to, I just want to make sure that this doesn't mess us up when we come, if we need to trim numbers from the budget between now and when we pass it before the end of March, that it's not that we actually passed it already for the whole year, so we can't take the...
It's temporary, yeah, so, right.
But as you said, that our requirement is to pass a permanent budget by the end of March.
So any budget we pass would just supersede this entirely?
Yes. Yes. Great. Thank you, Mr. Weisman? Oh, you're welcome. You're welcome, Mr. Weisman. Any other questions, ordinance, or... Yes, Mr. Rock?
I guess my question is, because we really don't know what went into these numbers, is this what we spent in 2019 to derive what's budgeted in the temporary appropriations here? Where did these numbers come from?
I did my best, Mr. Rock, to take what was projected we spent by year-end this, this year and reduce it by a couple of percentage points, just because of the uncertainty about the revenue we had at the beginning of the year. So I just wanted to come up with a number that was supported by the amount of revenue that the city was expected to generate or have on reserve at the start of 2020. Beyond that, you know, sifting through the 80 to 90 pages that were prepared...
Okay, so what we're seeing here is maintaining the city as it is today. We're not, this isn't projecting something new, or a new hire, or some fancy anything. This is just maintaining what we have in the temporary.
That's in line with the revenue that I can substantiate right now, so I feel comfortable that that would suffice in the filings with the county.
And I just have to ask, it's not a detailed budget. I don't see, you know, we go through the budget, and we'll have the detailed budget, so I'm not seeing really what goes into that, but I just wanted to hear from you that this isn't anything new thrown in.
No.
This is just maintained.
It's basically an extension of what's going on this year, based on my assessment of what the revenue is going into the beginning of the year. So the next, basically, 60 days, we'll put together a budget that's detailed by department and by fund, so everybody can see what, what numbers ultimately go into the mayor's submission.
And I would just add that this is not going to supersede the mayor's spending authority, so to the extent that there's any particular expenditure that the mayor would normally have to come to you for approval, he is still going to be able to do that.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Well, then, we will have had our first reading, and this will be back on the agenda for our next meeting. Next item is Item B, Resolution 2019-68, authorizing University Heights to participate in the State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program. This is on emergency. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mayor. This is participation in the state's cooperative purchasing program. Costs $100, basically what it does, it opens up the city to acquire goods and services on literally hundreds of contracts. The majority of political subdivisions, the county, a lot of other smaller entities participate in this program. What it does is it picks the negotiation of the contracts. The front-end work's already done, and if you purchase something off this program, you're relieved of all the bidding requirements. So it's a good option. It presents some efficiencies in terms of cost, and in a lot of cases, time and effort, but it's, it's good for alternatives. The city has not been a member since, I believe, the middle of 2017.
Yes, very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Weisman?
This is the program we use when you need to buy a police car or ambulance, something like that. Do you think we haven't purchased any equipment since 2017 under the Cooperative Purchasing Program?
Yeah.
I thought we have.
I think we have. I just, it doesn't appear that we paid.
We've been a member.
Well, I think we should.
I confirmed with the state that the city had not filed a resolution such as this since 2017.
Okay. I'm glad this ruled.
Well, good. Thank you for finding that out.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, for uncovering this.
Yes. Any further questions or comments about this item or for Mr. Kennedy? Okay. This item is being presented on emergency. Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve Resolution 2019-68 on emergency.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Sims. Is there any discussion?
It's funny, procedure, does it have to be on emergency? I don't think there's a 30-day wait for resolution, is there?
You know, our charter is so funny about this, and the, the reality is that there is a provision, I think in our ordinances, that says that resolutions do not have to be placed on emergency, but I have recommended that we do pass them on emergency if we're not reviewing twice, simply because there's well-established Ohio law that says that resolutions and ordinances are the same in terms of their effect. And so, just so that there isn't any question about the lawful effect of a resolution, I prefer that they adopted by resolution whenever they involve the expenditure.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weisman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. And thank you, Mr. Weisman. Any, oh, yeah, we have a motion on the floor already. Any further discussion?
Second.
Oh, we have a second?
Mr. Sims, second.
Okay. But thank you, Mr. Weisman. All right. All right, if there's no further discussion, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll first on the suspension of the rules?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Cardy?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Wise?
Aye.
And then on the main motion. Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Cardy?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Wise?
Aye.
Very good. The motion passes. Next item on the agenda is Ordinance 2019-69, authorizing the mayor to enter into a depository agreement with Dollar Bank for active and interim city funds. This is on emergency. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mayor. Similar to the previous item, this is basically a statutory requirement. Council passed a banking contract, I believe on November 5th of last year, to designate Dollar Bank as a depository, but the paperwork was never completed to actually acknowledge them. It was made by motion, so this is a resolution that will point them as a public depository, and that'll be in compliance with the investment policy.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any questions for Mr. Kennedy or any comments?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Sims?
Do you have other depository agreements?
No.
Okay. And then my other question is, what are active and interim city funds?
It's just designations of what you classify as money that's committed, not committed, or technical explanations that are defined in your investment policy is the standards.
So is this mainly cash, or...
It could be cash and/or securities. In the case of Dollar Bank, they primarily operate as the city's operating cash account.
Okay. Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Sims. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Some move mayor on emergency.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt a resolution on emergency by Mrs. Cardy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weisman? If there's no further discussion, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman? Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Cardy?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mrs. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Very good. Motion passes. Next item is Item D, Recommendation from Planning Commission Meeting of November 21st, 2019 for the Approval of Ordinance 2019-63. Rezoning certain parcels located on Warrensville Center Road as follows. Permanent parcel number 721-01-064 and 721-02-068 from U7 and U3 to local retail district U7. This is on second reading. Mr. Conville, beautiful.
Thank you, Mayor. This is part of the continuing effort being made by Susan Drucker and Patrick Grogan-Meyers to clean up certain areas of our zoning map. Really, Items D and E should be considered in tandem, since they're both seeking to accomplish the purpose of cleaning up the zoning map. In each instance, we have parcels that, we have single parcels that are indicated as having two separate zonings on them, U7 and U3. U3 was historically the parking buffer district. It, I think, the thinking on planning has evolved to a point where you want to have a single zoning district for any single parcel and allow your planning commission or other planning administrative arms to take care of issues such as buffering. The existence of two separate zones on a single parcel creates some confusion in terms of enforcement, what the setbacks are, what is allowed as a permitted use on the premises, and so this is the impetus for making these changes. Item D relates to the parcel that the annex is a part of, along with the adjacent bank, and then Item E relates to the Mr. Tire store that is adjacent to the BP station on Warrensville Center.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Any questions here, Mr. McConville? All right, is there, oh, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is bookkeeping, and is my term, but it won't change the usage by any of the owners of these properties.
Essentially, that's correct, because instead of the single parcels having the dual zoning of U7 and U3, they will simply have the U7 zoning. The U7 zoning, I believe, contains parking requirements that will need to be met, so variances would need to be obtained if those parking requirements aren't met. And with respect to any new development, the planning commission would, of course, have the opportunity to review and approve a site plan, so that they would be able to make sure that appropriate buffers exist with respect to adjacent properties, and would be able to, you know, condition their approval of any new construction or new project on the site plan being laid out in a way that they approve.
But this isn't going to interrupt their business, their current business?
No, their current business and any buildings that are currently situated on those parcels are not impacted by this change. They are grandfathered in terms of their zoning and their site plan and their location. Any new construction would be impacted insofar as it would simply be in a U7, not in this dual district.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman. Any other questions for Mr. McConville or comments on the proposed ordinance? Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move, Council approved the recommendation from the Planning Commission meeting of November 21st for the approval of ordinance 2019-63 rezoning certain parcels located on Warrensville Center Road, and the numbers follow.
Okay, very good. We have a motion. Mr. McConville, is that sufficient for what we need to do?
Yeah, and I just want to make it clear that what council is doing here is they're moving to adopt the ordinance based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission. The ordinance is up for second reading this evening. We read it first, then it was referred to the Planning Commission for their review and comment. We had our Planning Commission meeting last week. I'll report to council in more detail a portion of that meeting, but with respect to the consideration of Items D and E, really, the Planning Commission had no comment other than to indicate their approval by making a recommendation.
So I am moving that we approve ordinance 2019-63 based on that recommendation.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Cardy to approve ordinance 2019-63 based upon the recommendation of the Planning Commission. We have a second by Mr. Rock. Is there a discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Cardy?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Motion carries. Next item is Item E, Recommendation from the Planning Commission Meeting of November 21st, 2019 for the Approval of Ordinance 2019-64. Rezoning a certain parcel located on Warrensville Center Road, permanent parcel number 721-06-023 from automobile parking district U3 to local retail district U7. This is on second reading. Mr. McConville, have you basically covered this, but do you care to add?
Just that this is the ordinance that relates to the Mr. Tire parcel.
Very good. Is there any questions for Mr. McConville? Comments? There are none, is there a motion?
So moved.
Very good. Very good. We have a motion by Mrs. Weisman to adopt ordinance 2019-64 at further recommendation of the Planning Commission meeting. We have a second by councilwoman Cameron. Is there a discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Cardy?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Motion carries. Next is Item F, Motion to authorize the mayor to enter purchase offer agreement for land for residential attached development. Mr. McConville, will you have the pull?
Thank you, Mayor. This is also an item that should be familiar to council. It's a follow-up on the residential attached zoning that the city adopted earlier this year. The city and the Cleveland Heights University Heights School Board have entered into a letter of intent pursuant to which the school board would transfer certain residential properties in the RA district that it owns to the city. Those parcels are adjacent to, I believe, four parcels that the city owns. The city would then convey the entire block of properties to its CIC, and the CIC and the city will enter into a purchase agreement to accomplish the transfer from the school board to the city. Once the properties are in the CIC, the CIC will then negotiate with a developer for the sale of those properties to the developer pursuant to a development agreement that would require the developer to develop a specific project. The purchase agreement that has been drafted has not yet been reviewed by the school board council, so we anticipate that there may be some comments returning, but we think that it will be substantially similar to what was provided to council. The main way in which this purchase agreement differs from a garden variety purchase agreement for property is that there is a clawback provision in it that allows the school board to buy back the property from the city or the CIC if the developer is unable to develop the project within a four-year timeframe. So obviously, when the CIC is dealing with the developer, we will have to include the same kinds of deed restrictions that allow for buyback of the properties, and the purchase price for the buyback is the cost of any improvements that have been made either, well, not on the property, if there's a development, if there's improvement that's on the property, it's not eligible for clawback. But if the property is vacant, but there have been improvements that are made that benefit the property, for example, installation of sewer utilities, then those costs would comprise the purchase price for the clawback. This is the school board's way of guaranteeing, if you will, that the city does what it says it's going to do, which is namely find a developer to develop the land into a residential attached project.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Sims, you.
I have a comment, but on the clawback, I think that that is an example that the city should always follow. And there should be a definite amount of time that any developer is given to demonstrate that they can perform, or they should return what they buy from us or what is gifted to them back to the city. And that's common in most development agreements, the clawback. My question is relating to the conversation that you had about the improvements. I didn't quite understand what you were saying.
Well, so the way the clawback is going to work is that only property that remains blank, if you will, will be eligible for the clawback. So, for example, if a residential attached building has been placed on the property on a particular parcel, that parcel is no longer eligible for clawback.
Okay.
So we anticipate, based on discussions with the proposed developer, that these units will go up in phases, and so, you know, certain parcels will become ineligible for clawback as units go up, and it's only parcels that no building goes up on after that four-year period that would be eligible for the clawback.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McConville. Thank you, Mr. Sims. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Kennedy.
I will be passing upon this vote.
I understand.
This is a vote to allow the mayor to enter into an agreement with the school district. I'm an employee of the school district. Here's a conflict of interest, potentially, so I will not be fully known. Just wanted to make that clear.
Very good. Thank you. Any further questions or comments on this agenda item? Is there a motion? So moved. Very good. We have a motion to authorize the mayor to enter a purchase offer agreement for land for residential attached development by Mr. Erdl. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Weisman. Is there any comment or discussion on the motion? Yes, Mr. Weisman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Weisman. I just would like to express my gratitude to the administration for the hard work that's been done on this. We've been discussing this for a long time, and there was a lot of moving parts, and the effort by the administration and all the employees together, I think, is wonderful. I think this is going to be really, really good for the city, and I can't wait till we get, start unveiling things and get pictures and a more concrete idea of what's going on, but I'm happy about that, and I'd like to express my thanks as well to the, to the school board, because sometimes it's hard to make a deal like this, but I really appreciate everybody's efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman. I wholeheartedly agree. Thank you for your support in this project. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Cardy?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries. Next is Item G, Motion Request Authorization Seek Bids for the 2020-2023 Catch Basin Inlet Sewer Cleaning and Television Inspection Program. Mr. Corney?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. This is a bid which provides us with services for cleaning sewers, cleaning catch basins on an annual basis. We've had a contract every year for many years. The last contract spanned two years, and has now, or will expire here shortly at the end of December, so we need to bid for those services again. I did need to point out that I did make a little bit of a typo in here. This should be a three-year contract, which would be in the years 2020, 2021, and 2022, so it will be a three-year contract instead of a four-year contract. We're estimating that we spend approximately $200,000 a year cleaning catch basins, cleaning and televising sewers, and repairing things that we find. This is just the cleaning and repairing part of the contract. That will be in the next item, happens to do with repairing and maintenance of items that we find. I'm recommending that we go out to bid, and I'll bring you back the results of those bids once we have them.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Corney. As a matter of housekeeping, Mr. McConville, do we need to move to amend the agenda item? Because I read it as 2020 to 2023, and as Mr. Corney stated, it is only intended to be a three-year program going to 2022.
Let's do that.
Okay. Is there a motion to amend the agenda item accordingly to motion request authorization to seek bids for the 2020 to 2022 Catch Basin Inlet Sewer Cleaning and Television Inspection Program?
Before we do here?
Yes.
I have a question.
Okay.
Because it could affect the amendment.
Okay.
If it's going to be amended in that way, should it say January 1, 2022, December 31st, 2022? This is really general, and it could mean different stuff. So if that's the intent, is that the intent?
That is the intent. We have had contracts that have spanned that same from January 1st to December 31st.
Right, because contracts usually have a specific start and end date, so I think we should state those dates in the years.
Okay. All right. Very good. Is there, let's say, motion to that affect with the specific January 1, 2022, December 31st, 2022 dates? Are you making that motion, Mr. Sims?
If I can ask my other question.
Sure, sure.
So my other question is, two questions. First one, how much did you say we, on this specific aspect of sewers, we spend annually?
Less than $200,000, but close to 200. It varies.
So this could be potentially $600,000 over three years.
Correct.
So is there a reason that we decided to go three years rather than two years?
It more closely matches our cleaning program. We try to get around the city and clean the entire city in a three-year period, so it's closer match to that rather than two years.
Okay, and then my final question, or really, just an observation, is that $600,000 or $500,000 is a sizable amount, and we have instituted, through the hard work of Councilwoman Weisman, ordinances relating to small women and minority-owned businesses, and trying to ensure that they participate on contracts. So to me, this is the perfect contract, the perfect opportunity, and it's the type of work that it should not be that much of a challenge to find someone to participate on contract with you. So I hope that we can communicate that to whoever is a successful bidder, and make sure that it's memorialized in some way that we can assure accountability. And with that, I would make a motion to amend the, I would move to amend the language to state a motion to, to request authorization to seek bids for, for the period January 1, 2020 through December 31st, 2022, catch basins, inlet sewers, cleaning, and television inspection program?
Correct.
Okay, so that's the amendment.
Very good. Thank, we have motion by Mr. Sims to amend the agenda item as such. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hamlin. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Cardy?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
I just have a general question, because it is a sizable amount. Is this money that is offset by the assessment that we have, or the sewer assessment?
By which assessment?
The sewer assessment that we have.
Yes.
Is it offset by this?
Yes. As I stated in here, it comes out of the 201 sewer maintenance fund. And there was an actual line item for maintenance outside.
Okay. Thank you. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rock. Thank you, Mr. Pecorni. Any further questions or comments? Is there a motion to amend?
So moved.
Very good. Motion by Mr. Sims. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Wise. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Wise?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Should item H be amended the same way as item G?
Well, I can read item H to be consistent with the fashion as Mr. Sims amended, so we can avoid the amendment. Is that right, Mr. McConville?
Correct.
Then I will endeavor to read it correctly.
Wonderful.
Very good. Thank you for bringing that up before you read it wrong. All right. Any further discussion? Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Fardie?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries. The next agenda item is item H. I will read as follows. Motion to request authorization, seek bids for emergency sewer repairs for the period of January 1, 2020 through December 31st, 2022. Mr. Pecorni, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is for emergency sewer repairs, road repairs, and other items that we have to do related to sewers and water mains within the city. We, again, in the past, it's been a two-year contract. We'd like to make it a three-year contract to be more consistent with the repairs we're doing with the sewer inspection. We spend approximately $125,000 a year doing these types of repairs. And it does come out of the water and sewer maintenance fund, 201.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Pecorni. Any questions for Mr. Pecorni or any comments? Very good. Is there a motion?
So, I move that we request authorization to seek the emergency sewer repairs for the period January 1, 2020, January 1, 2020 through December 31st, 2022.
Okay. We have a motion authorized to seek bids for sewer repairs for the time period, January 1, 2020 through December 31st, 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Wise. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Fardie?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pecorni. Okay. Next item is item I, motion to hold an executive session. Me, it's following this regular meeting for purposes discussing personnel, legal, and/or real estate matters. And yes, we would like to update the council on real estate matters. So, we would request a motion to hold an executive session for that purpose. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Erdl. We have a motion by Mr. Erdl for executive session, real estate matters. Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Wise. Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Fardie?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Aye. Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. We will hold that following a conclusion, regular portion of the meeting. We now turn to reports. Finance, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor. I have sent out to council a number of summary reports, one related to expenses, one related to revenue, and then a summary of investment activity for the month of October. I'll be kind of tweaking those over the next month to get a better perspective. I'm trying to get the system to work so that we can get a higher level review, so you don't have to get pages and pages and pages of all the detail. The detail's there for anybody who wants it. I always give you a printout of the system generator report to make sure that you know that those reports are tying in to the numbers that are being represented, like on Excel reports. We'll have a couple of things coming at the next meeting in addition to the temporary appropriations. We should have a decision on healthcare for 2020 in terms of moving forward with a renewal on the existing contract. I'll have something before you to approve a worker's comp payment. We have to make that payment. It's roughly $138,000. We have to make that payment prior to the end of this year to get a discount for next year. So, the prepayment discount makes it worth it. So, money is available, so we're going to do that. I also hope to have in your hands very soon a draft of a new investment policy. As you may have known from the notice I put out, the investment policy that the council amended in October was actually not the real investment policy that the city has. It was the 2002 investment policy, which is outdated. That policy only limited your investments to two years. You already have long-term securities up to five years, so technically we're in violation of the policy that exists. The newer version never got approved somehow. I don't look back and look and look, but I can't find it being approved. So, I have updated that version. It's sent it to a couple of investment advisors to get their opinion on it. But that should be out to you probably by the end of this week, so we can get that adopted. And then, everything will be in sync in terms of what our investments are versus what we're allowed to do.
We approved an investment policy, oh, like a year ago, right?
No.
That wasn't changed a couple of years ago. We approved a better investment policy.
Well, that, as Mr. Kennedy was saying, apparently that investment policy was based upon an older version and not the one that had been followed historically by administration, by historically, I mean, prior to my being here.
Maybe, maybe Larry, maybe Larry.
There was a policy, Mr. Wise, that Larry Isner had developed, but I cannot find anything in the ordinances. I talked to Mrs. Fardie as well to see if there was. And the ordinance that, the resolution that came through in October of this year referenced 2002 dash whatever.
My recollection is that there was a lot of discussion over the past year of the investment policy based on the liquidation of some investments, but that there was no new investment policy or other action taken on the investment policy. And the reason I say that is because in response to some council inquiry, I was asked to review the investment policy this year, and I was reviewing what was clearly an older policy.
So, what did we approve?
Amendmented an old policy.
Which wasn't in effect, right?
Well, it was in effect, because we never got an ordinance for anyone, right?
Right. That I can believe.
Right. Well, it's.
So, we had an investment policy. It's just not.
Cut off today.
To go back to 2002.
And in 2002, according to chapter 135 of the revised code, you could only buy investments for a period that would see two years. And subsequently changed to five. City did enter into purchase agreements for five-year securities. So, I've updated everything. Everything will be current within a week or so after you get this, depending on how fast you want to pass it.
Well, we've waited 17 years.
Well, the, I think the aim is to have it, you know, for first reading at the next meeting, and we can do it for. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any further questions, Collins? Anything further, Mr. Kennedy?
Not for me, thank you.
Okay. All right. If there's nothing further on that, we will turn to Director of Law, Mr. McConville.
Very briefly, Council, I just want to update you on what may be a matter of interest. We had a very well-attended planning commission meeting last week. I hesitate to say in front of Chief Perko that the maximal occupancy of this room was almost certainly exceeded. It was literally wall-to-wall people. The application was made by the owner of the property of 4380 University Parkway. They were represented by our former law director, Ken Fisher. Their application was made under chapter 1274 of our ordinances, requesting a special use permit to operate a shul in the basement of the property in a residential zone. Everyone who was here was here in support of the application. There was no one in attendance who was opposed to the application. Planning commission members were very receptive to the use and made that abundantly clear, I believe, to the applicant. However, they wanted to see as-built drawings of the premises and make sure that the building department and the fire department had an opportunity to inspect, to make sure that the shul, as it's currently built, is up to code. So, the way the planning commission left it was that the applicant would provide as-built drawings and arrange for inspections, and that the planning commission would reconvene at some point prior to the end of February of 2020 to consider the matter for final approval. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Any questions or comments on this report? Very good. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Coming up then, we have public safety. Police is first. But Chief Rogers had a family matter that came up rather late that he had to attend to. But before he left, he gave me a report. So, there are two items. The first is the menorah parade, which the University Heights Police and Fire Departments will be participating in. The date is Sunday, December 22nd. The parade begins and ends at Legacy Village. There will be two University Heights Police Department auxiliary units that will be taking part in the parade. Cogga County Sheriff's Office units will be escorting the parade. The route is expected to go as far west as Cleveland Heights West border, past University Heights City Hall around 6:00 PM. The route will stop at Lynnhurst City Hall for a menorah lighting, and will also have a menorah lighting ceremony at the end of the route at Legacy Village. The parade is expected to have approximately 60 cars, a mile long, and should end around 7:00 PM. I can also tell you that if you are, want more information on the menorah parade or are interested in registering for it, the internet address for that is c l e menorahparade.com. Second item is shop with the cop, which will likely occur within the next two weeks. Students from the school district will be selected to shop with officers and target to purchase presents for their families for the holidays. Gift cards will be provided to the students to be utilized for the shopping expenses. The event will also include food and refreshments provided at the local restaurant with the students and their families. Planning is still ongoing to finalize the event, and more information will be provided once confirmed. With that, Chief Rogers sends his regrets that he could not be here personally. Any questions? I will try to field what I can on his behalf. Seeing none, public safety, fire. Chief Perko.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Two items to report for you this evening. Fire Department's been working on reviewing the ongoing changes with ambulance billing in our contract, making sure that IT-2 is up to date and where it needs to be. So, I hope in the next upcoming few meetings, we can get something to you for your review on that. Second item is an update on our current ladder truck and the new ladder truck. Over the fall, we had our annual aerial ladder testing of the ladder truck performed. Unfortunately, it failed that testing. We sent it out to a third party to see what repairs were needed. They were able to make the repairs, but they were unsure how they felt about the certification of those repairs as far as us actually using the aerial ladder and operating from it. So, they contacted the manufacturer, the manufacturers in Wisconsin for that truck. They were uncomfortable as well with allowing this vendor to make the needed repairs without them seeing it. So, we're sending it out, it went out today, to a different vendor that's approved with the manufacturer to see if they're able to make the repairs and what the cost would be and if it would be effective or not with the new ladder truck coming in. So, we expect that it'll be out at least for the week and then determining what they come up with, how long after that. The good news is, in December of this month, the Ladder Truck Committee will be going down to Columbus, to that manufacturer, for the midpoint inspection. So, the chassis has been put together, the cab, a lot of the electronics, the motors in the truck. They're getting ready to put the pump into the truck. So, that will be sometime this month. We'll go down and take a look. They should be putting the aerial onto that truck and starting to assemble the rest of the compartments and things. And after that meeting, we'll have a general idea on when we're going to take delivery of that truck. So, I will give you an update and hopefully some photos here soon.
Okay. That concludes my report. Very good. Thank you, Chief Perko. Any questions from Chief Perko? Very good. Thank you, Chief. Next up is service. Mr. Pecorni.
Thank you, Mayor. Three items to report on. Tree planting. The tree planting contract, which council approved not so long ago, is now complete. We planted 136 new trees. And as requested, we were able to put seven new trees into Walter Stinson Community Park as well. That work is done. However, we haven't been invoiced yet, so I'll let you know when we actually pay the bill. Tree pruning has commenced. That will be our winter project, starting now in December and going through May of 2020. They have somewhere in their range of 750 to 800 trees to do. We will be getting letters out to those that are code for tree removals here shortly. Excuse me. Leaf collection, as the mayor had mentioned earlier, is going quite well. Hopefully, we will be wrapping it up next week. We plan on going from December 9th to the 14th with our last round of the city. And after that point, we will be requesting residents to bag their leaves for a collection. We'll resume that again in April. And that concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Pecorni. Any questions for Mr. Pecorni? Okay. Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Pecorni. Next is building. Mr. McReynolds is home ill and is house-excused from the meeting. I do not have to report for him. Next is letter F, city engineer, Mr. Chiny.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Just a couple of items, two of them on the agendas. You passed item D and E this evening. When that ordinance is signed into law, that authorizes my office to update the zoning map, and I'll update that map as quickly as possible and get copies over here to City Hall. Thank you for passing the ordinance, or the request for authorization, or for bids for the sewer cleaning. Mr. Pecorni has been very religious in that in the last several years. We have had a lot of big storms recently, and we have not had the basement flooding we used to have. And I think it's all because of the cleaning and the TV that we do. We find some areas that we have to repair, and we get them done. We clean those catch basins. You can imagine some of the big storms we had recently when Shanker had 50% of their homes had couches and carpeting out in their tree lawn, and we didn't have it, hardly any. And it's a very good program. Thank you for passing that. It's worth every penny that it's going to cost us. Finally, the Washington Boulevard project is paved and striped. They are completed for the year. It came out very well. There's a matter of restoration that has to be completed. They planted the grass and put some straw down. We had a hurricane last Wednesday, and the straw kind of went all over. They are in the process of cleaning that up, but I doubt we're going to do anything else this year. We'll come back in the spring and get the tree lawns restored. They are smoothed out. They all are backfilled. But they could use some drier topsoil and some better seed under, which will get done next spring. End of report, Mayor.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Chiny. Any questions for Mr. Chiny? Very good. Thank you. Next up is communications and civic engagement. Mr. Cook.
Good evening. As the mayor alluded to in his report, the SOC drive began today. It'll run through December 20th. In addition to the University Heights Library, the school district is going to be helping us out with that. Thank you. They'll be collecting in this building. We're at the front desk there, and I've reached out to a couple of other organizations in the county. So, hopefully, we can get a couple more groups on board with that. On Sunday at the library at 2:00 PM, we're going to have a book event. We're going to have the author of the book, Mrs. Morehart, and the boys come in. come in and talk about her book and show a short film associated with that. You brought us to talk about that at the Civic Awards a couple weeks ago, and it's also in the latest issue of the Mosaic. So that's this Sunday, which is December 8, at 2:00 p.m. at the Heights Library. Speaking of books, I'm going to work with Joan very closely, as we heard from her earlier, to promote the wonderful program to get free books into the hands of kids in University Heights. You'll see that roll out starting tomorrow. And finally, as the mayor mentioned in his report, already notified, it's already up on the city website. Like I said, we're going to see that in the newsletter, which comes out next week. It'll be mailed and emailed to people, and then we'll just kind of continue from there. We'll just keep promoting it heavily and through, probably in February, with the February issue of Mosaic magazine. That's it.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Cook. Any questions for Mr. Cook? All right, seeing none. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cook. All right, next, with the economic development, Mrs. Strucker is with family, and is not here this evening and is excused. Likewise, with housing to be developed. Mr. Gravenmeyer is also excused, but I do have a report from Mr. Gravenmeyer, so it may be one moment to bring it up. Yes, yes, the city is hosting a public hearing this Thursday, December 5, at 6:00 p.m. to hear input from residents on possible projects for the city's community development supplemental grant. That's the CDSG application. That sounds boring, but I assure you it's not. The meeting will be at the city annex at 2245 Warrensville Center Road, Suite 105. So if residents are not able to attend, they are encouraged to send their input for possible projects to development at universityheights dot com. The county land bank, which is acting as the agent for the city to demolish the former pest control building located at 2109 Taylor Road, is now under contract with the demolition contractor. Depending on the weather, demolition is scheduled to begin next week. Finally, the Northeast Ohio Area Wide Coordinating Agency, better known as NOACAM, in partnership with Cleveland Heights and University Heights, has been studying Taylor Road and considering the possibility of including multimodal alternatives. The second public meeting about the study is scheduled for Thursday, December 12, at 7:00 p.m. at Cleveland Heights City Hall. Come and learn more about the study and the recommendations for improving multimodal access on Taylor Road. And that concludes the report of the Housing and Community Development Director. And we now turn to our standing committees. Building, Mr. Weis.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Weis. Civic information, Mrs. Cameron.
Yes, Mayor, I just have a question for Mr. McConville. If he could give me some direction or clarity in terms of the resolution that we've asked to be prepared.
Sure. I think I had emailed at one point just to clarify what it is that council is wanting to see, and in particular, whether they wanted a Democracy Day or not, or any other changes.
I love democracy, but, you know, I'm up to whatever.
Well, I can do my best to eliminate that piece of the prior legislation presented as an ordinance, and I can have it to you at the next meeting.
Yes, that would be.
That'll be Mrs. Cameron's last meeting, so it'd be wonderful to be able to consider. Anything else, Mrs. Cameron?
Oh, no, that was it.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Finance, Mrs. Pardini.
Thank you, Mayor. There will be a meeting next Monday, December 9, at 6:30, hopefully in the annex for one hour, to consider the salary ordinances so that we can have something ready to go on the agenda, hopefully for the next council meeting, for the first reading, and we can have that done as we go into budgeting. We will be doing that, and then my colleague, John, will be having the Safety Committee meeting right after that. She'll report. Thank you.
Safety Committee is the same, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mrs. Pardini. Next up then is governmental affairs, Mrs. Weis. Thank you, Mrs. Weis. Then recreation, Mr. Earl.
Yes.
I have no committee report, but I do have something I would like to relay. The Friday before Thanksgiving, the city was giving away turkeys, 100 turkeys, to those in need. And I got a call from an old friend of mine who moved back to University Heights. Used to play ball with them growing up. And he's returned from China recently. He's had a stroke, unfortunately, and he's destitute. He's living in his parents' old home here in University Heights. And he asked me if he might get one of these turkeys. And so I said, I'll see what I can do, because I had, he doesn't have any way of getting there. So I called Mr. Cook, and I asked him if I could have one put aside, you know, at the alleys or something for me that I could pick up later, because they were distributing these things at 11 o'clock on Friday, and that didn't work for me. And Mike was great and actually offered to deliver it to his home. I said, fantastic. Thank you very much. And later that afternoon, I got a text from my friend, and there was a picture of the mayor with the turkey in his home. And he also delivered a very nice handwritten note. And it was just crazy over and beyond what was asked for. And I can't tell you what a splash it made on social media, here and in China. Yeah, yeah. So thank you very much for all your assistance. It was really, really great, and it was a very nice gesture on your part.
You're welcome. And thank you, Commissioner, for letting us know, because we wouldn't have known if you hadn't let us know that we could do this. You know, I got to spend a few minutes with him talking about China.
I'll bet.
He had a lot to say, and I could have sat there all afternoon if I didn't have, well, some other things to do.
Yeah, no kidding.
He just had some wonderful stories.
Yeah. Well, thanks again. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Earl. Next up is safety, Mr. Rock.
Yes, Mayor, as Vice Mayor had pointed out, we will have a meeting on the 9th at 7:30 in the annex.
Very good. Anything in particular we're going to discuss?
Well, the police chief would like to go over a few things about finished business from the last meeting, specifically the towing. He, and there was a co-over.
All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Rock. Service and utilities, Mr. Simmons.
No report, Mayor. Up then to say that the committee isn't really working on anything that requires immediate action. And so I would suspect that the next meeting of the Services and Utilities Committee will be in 2020.
I imagine it will be. Hopefully, no later than that. Well, thank you for your service on this committee, Mr. Simmons.
You're welcome.
And for your service generally.
That's it. Thank you.
All right, and then finally, committee of the whole, Mrs. Pardini.
No report, Mayor.
All right, well, we have exhausted our regular agenda items, leaving only the motion to go into executive session, which we previously passed, discuss real estate matter. I do not anticipate that there will be any motions necessary coming out of executive session, so that while you are welcome to stay, it would appear that the regular business of the meeting has concluded for the evening. We will not make Mr. Cook stay with the camera to record, and I see the chair, record to record our motion to adjourn. We'll simply do that, the old-fashioned way, with Mrs. Thomas and on the record. So we will recess at this time so that we can reconvene in the meeting room, and the rest of you are welcome to hang on. Thank you all for being here. Hope you had a happy Thanksgiving. Don't forget, 6:30 at the next council meeting, okay? And to honor Mrs. Cameron and Mr. Simmons.